Okay, good evening. We will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, August 4th, 2014. I'd ask that you all please rise for briefing invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as always, we are ever mindful of the tasks and responsibilities before the City Council, and we just ask for guidance and blessings as we undertake to discuss and act upon the various items of business before us. As always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving in defense of the liberties of the United States of America on foreign soil, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of them as they go about their vital functions in defense of our liberties and freedoms. Tonight also, we want to ask for a special blessing upon all those in our community who are disabled or under illness of some form or fashion, and know that the City Council and the support staff of the community of Batavia is always here to help those in our community in their moments of need, and that has become one of the great badges of honor that the city wears. We ask for all these blessings, knowing that each member of the City Council is here tonight to, in their own way, act upon the best interest of the community of Batavia as they see fit. Amen. Alderman Clark, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
ATAC.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chantet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sparks.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien is absent. Callahan.
Here.
Homan.
Here.
Sam.
Here.
Alderman Basilian is absent. Alderman Saron is absent. McFadden.
Here.
So let the record reflect that eleven of the fourteen elected Aldermen are present and accounted for so we have the necessary qualm to conduct business, and I think two of them are out of town, I'm not sure where the third is, but everybody is accounted for it. I don't think anybody's ill in the matter of business here tonight. Okay, moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman Sparks, as Chairman of Governmental Services, would you present this, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. We are removing item number four, the executive session for purchase and sale of electric power, removing it off the agenda, and if there's nothing else, I move we accept the agenda as revised.
Second. Okay, moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Brown, for the approval of the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sparks.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion's approved, eleven yes, no no's, three absent. Moving then to item number five, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Sparks, as Chairman of Governmental Services, would you present this, please?
Thank you. The consent is as follows, to accept and place on file: A, the Joint Committee of the Home Minutes for June 24th, July 1st, 2014; B, the Historic Preservation Commission Minutes for May 12th and June 16th, 2014; C, the June 2014 financials. The approvals are D, the July 8th, 2014 payroll, amount of $746,299.07, and the August 1st 2,000 payroll, amount of $739,874.79; E, the August 1st, 2014 accounts payable check register, and amount of $865,704.82; F, the City Council Minutes for July 7th, 2014; G, Resolution 14-88-R, authorizing task order number 10 with RJN Group for the 2014 Manhole Rehabilitation Project; H, Resolution 14-96-R, authorizing execution of the agreement for the 2014 Street Program Sewer Cleaning and Televising with Visual Sewer of Illinois, LLC, the amount of $32,130.95; I, approval for a Class F liquor license for the Art in your eye. I move we accept the consent as presented.
Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Clark, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sparks.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, eleven yes, no no's, three absent. Okay, moving to item number six, our matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody who wishes to address this this evening? Wendy, I heard you wasn't going to come down.
These are two of our many children, Mary Pat and George. This is where Gaetano and I get all of our strength, believe it or not. After my husband, Gaetano and I moved our family to the beautiful city of Batavia a couple of years ago, we began to develop a little dream of opening an upscale restaurant right here in town. It has taken a while to make this dream come true. Many of you have thanked us for bringing Gaetanos to downtown Batavia, but now it's our turn to thank all of you. Gaetano and I would personally like to thank you, Batavia, the residents, Mayor Schilke, Bill McGrath, Chris Aiston, Jeff Albertson, Toby Petry, Deputy Chief Randy Banker from the Batavia Fire Department, all of the Aldermen, Joy Cortero of Batavia Main Street, Holly Deekman of the Chamber of Commerce, the secretaries, and the staff from City Hall, all of you, for all of your patience, your support, and your well wishes. It's taken a lot of sweat, some tears, fortunately, no blood, maybe a little bit, I don't know, and a little dream of ours to keep everything going, but we never could have pulled it off this project without each and every one of you. If you haven't heard already, I would like to announce that Gaetanos Batavia will proudly open its doors tomorrow night at 5:00. We look forward to bringing something a little different to downtown, and we are very proud to be here. Many heartfelt thanks to all of you. Bon appetito.
Thank you, and thank you for choosing Batavia. We look forward to many, many years of business relationship with Gaetanos as an anchor in downtown Batavia.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, moving then to item number seven, which is the Batavia Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, everyone. So proud to be on such a nice list that Wendy just listed there. I was also going to mention Gaetanos and how excited we are to have them coming to Batavia. It's interesting, we have two great things that are coming to us. One is the Acosta Consignment and also Gaetanos. These are businesses that have been successful in other communities that are now choosing to grow in Batavia, and I think that's a different thing. It's not a new small business that's opening, it's not a big manufacturer that's opening a new warehouse here. These are two successful businesses that are choosing Batavia, and I think that's a great trend I would like to see happening in the chamber and also in our just general local business here. There's a couple of things that I wanted to mention about recent past events. We had a very successful Windmill City Fest, and looking forward to partnering again with the Park District and the city in that in the future, and the Chili Cook-Off, which we had twenty-eight of the Cassie Chili Appreciation Society International people, there, twenty-eight of them entered into it this year, there were twenty-five last year, so we had some growth in that. We had 200 resident tasters that came across and bought the $5 tasting spoon and a wristband, so we're seeing growth in that event, and we're hoping to continue moving forward with some more growth, and again, a partnership with the Batavia Park District. Very happy to say that the Range Grill &amp; Tap here won the Best Restaurant Chili, so we had brought them on as well, and Dr. Feelgood was the winner of the Cassie, and he actually was from Batavia, so that was a cool change of things, and again, great things happening in Batavia. I have two upcoming events that I would like to invite you all to, if you're not already registered. On Tuesday, August 12th, at 11:30 a.m. at Lincoln End Banquets, the Batavia Women in Business are welcoming eight other local chambers and their members to participate in a progressive networking luncheon. So it's a great time where you sit at one table for your salad, and then go to the next table for your entree, and then move to another table for your dessert course, and that's so that you get an opportunity to mingle with seven new people at each course. So you get a couple of minutes to talk about your business and learn about other businesses that you may be able to partnership, partner with as well, and so please join us for that. And then we also have, on Wednesday, August 20th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., is our Networking It event. It's free and open networking, so whether you're a member of the chamber or you're not, we welcome you to come and talk to some of our business leaders in our community. Kind of a fun thing we're doing this time, we're doing it at Wilson Street Tavern in partnership with Ream's Elburn Market. We're doing a craft beer and jerky tasting. So come and join us for that, and it should be a really fun night, but that's what I have for you from the chamber.
Any questions? I just want to mention, I've been very, very pleased to have developed a good working relationship with Holly, and, excuse me, she and I had the opportunity here a couple weeks ago on Saturday, the same day as the Chili Cook-Off, that we were asked to come down to the Marmion Military Campus in Aurora, and I specifically was requested by the Mayor of Aurora to go and represent him, because he had to be out of town, and they wanted to have the ribbon cutting that day, and they needed a mayor to cut the ribbon. So I guess it's in the Batavia School District and the Batavia Park District, so I, he and I have this kind of joke, because we get a lot of the folks down there at the commercial area at Fabio, or at Butterfield and Kirk, they want Batavia Mayor to come down there and cut the ribbon, because they like to be known with a Batavia relationship, but I've, I turned all those down, and because it's all in the city of Aurora and it rightfully belongs to Aurora. So Wisner turned the table on me this time and said, would you go represent me at this event, because I need a mayor to go do it. Well, Holly came with me, and I guess they have joined the chamber, which is, but I will tell you, I think she and I were both very pleasantly pleased by what a nice facility they have down there, and it's out there in the middle of the tree forest, where people go and cut their trees down for Christmas time, and I guess the idea is, is that they're going to be open from, they're going to, they're going to be open from the first of January to about the first of October, then they're going to close, because they're going to do a big pumpkin festival down there, and then they're going to follow that with the Christmas trees, and they're going to use this building for staging various events for those two activities. So it's going to be like about a nine-month-a-year deal for the banquets and wedding receptions and parties and whatever, but it, it is really a top-notch facility that Marmion has got there, and it was donated by the Nagel family, who I believe are out of Big Rock or Sugar Grove area, and it's very, very nice, and she and I went and I think we ably represented Batavia, so I appreciate you going with me on that.
And I appreciate you going. It's one of those sticky situations where they're calling me saying they want us to come and do a ribbon cutting, they've just become members of the chamber, we're proud to have them, and then you don't realize this mayor relationship, who's going to cut the ribbon thing, and you both handled it beautifully, and it was, it was really great, and of course, you said very nice things about their mayor at the ribbon cutting, but you're, the inside of that place is gorgeous, isn't it? They used all reclaimed wood on the inside, and then they have this huge, where caterers can come in and use their facility to cook the meals for weddings, and it's really beautiful. So, thank you.
You don't, you have anybody else with you to speak or anything?
Not today.
Okay. All right. Okay, moving then to item number eight, which is Resolution 14-95-R, approval to donate stolen and lost bicycles to the Batavia Bicycle Commission. Alderman Sparks?
Thank you, Your Honor. Earlier this year, the Batavia Bicycle Commission received several donated bikes from the community, the community, and a $750 donation to repair the bikes, to hand the bikes out to disadvantaged families. What this resolution is going to do is it's going to authorize the city to let the bike commission take possession of abandoned bicycles and give them away to disadvantaged families. The city attorney looked into it, and there were like three things we have to do, the bikes have to be less than $100 apiece, there has to be an effort made to return to the owner, and six months have had to pass while we had the bike and nobody claimed it. This helps out families in, in the disadvantaged families in town, it also helps the police department gain more room in their storage area from getting rid of old bicycles they have. I make a motion that we pass Resolution 14-95-R to authorizing the Batavia Bike Commission to take possession of abandoned bicycles and give them away.
Second. Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman ATAC, for the approval of Resolution 14-95-R. Any discussion?
Your Honor, I forgot to give one question the other night that came to mind. Do we have to do this every year? Are we going to have to continually keep doing this each year, or is this going to cover it for five years or into the future? Do we know?
I don't know. Roma, would you do the first?
Yeah, I guess every year that you'll be donating bikes, you should authorize it every year, if nothing else, just as formality to...
I just want to make sure that we keep on top of it and we keep doing, because I think it's a great idea to do that.
Did we ever find out, I'm sorry, did we ever find out how many bikes were up there? Phil? Phil? Did we ever find out how many bikes were up there? I know I had asked that at the committee, but nobody was really sure.
No, I will all look tomorrow.
I'm just curious, that's all. How many you, how many we collect any, I don't know how many, how many years it's been that they've had them up there, but...
I'll look tomorrow and report back.
All right, thanks.
Other comments or questions? Kirk, call the roll then on the approval of Resolution 14-95-R.
Sparks.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion's approved, eleven yes, no no's, three absent. Okay, moving to item number nine, Alderman Sparks, you want to introduce it, and then I can take it over?
This is Resolution 14-94-R, an employment agreement with William McGrath, City Administrator.
Well, I think you've all been given copies of it, and we've had several opportunities to discuss this in executive session, and as I shared, I think some of, a couple of you weren't at the last executive session when we talked about it. I think that, as I told them, the timeframe of this is going to be, as all of you know, this agreement kind of culminates in Mr. McGrath's retirement from the city of Batavia, and the timetable that we're looking at on all this is, is that we are currently advertising nationwide for an assistant city administrator, who will be hopefully hired sometime between now and the end of the year. You know, the council's going to have to do some interviews and whatever have you, so that person will be put into place. Then we are going to run into a kind of a downtime for a few months, because we got the municipal elections going on, and those will be, you know, the new council on that side of the room will be sworn in in May of next year. About this time, or earlier than this, next summer, we will begin the active advertising for the replacement of Mr. McGrath as the city administrator, and given how these things go on, I would anticipate that that's probably going to take about another six-month period of time, by the time we go through the advertisement and the interviews, and obviously, the council's going to want to have the opportunity to do this. Also, I think it'll give us a little bit of a time to see how the new assistant administrator is, and if it's somebody we want to consider for that position or not, that obviously will be decided by the council. And then the idea would be that we would hire the new administrator at the end of next year, with the idea that that would give us some months, as I believe, you know, a couple of you have already indicated to me, you'd like to see some transition time, where the new person would kind of take over, and Bill would be here to kind of advise and share his knowledge for a few months as he phased into retirement. So that's kind of the timeframe that we're looking at, so everybody's clear, and I'm saying it publicly, so everybody can hear what's going on, and I've chatted with Bill about it, and that's kind of the, what we have in mind for this. Does anybody have any particular questions on the agreement? Not at entertaining motion.
So move.
Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman ATAC, for the approval of the Resolution 14-94-R, the employment agreement. Kirk, call the roll.
Sparks.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
That one is approved, eleven yes, no no's, three absent. Okay, going to item number 10, the administrative's report, Mr. McGrath.
Thanks, Mayor. There's a lot of, a lot going on, being construction season, we're, but among other things, we're working on the AGS Incentive Agreement. If you recall, that's a company that is consolidating from Elk Grove Village in Schaumburg into Batavia. They're doing some work in the building now, and we're working on that agreement before they start production. On Walgreens, we're working with Batavia Enterprises, there's some issues between Batavia Enterprises and Walgreens Corporation that the city is trying to assist them on. They will be appearing before the J-Cow on September 9th to discuss themselves, what their status is and any outstanding issues that are there, because we have given a couple of extensions, and we thought it appropriate that they come in before you and talk about the situation. The 2014 Street Program is about to be bid, we're working on some land acquisition involving the Deer Path Bridge Project. We did pursuant to the committee's recommendation and the request of the neighbor next to the art stop parking lot, Noel did meet with her, and had a nice meeting about shielding, and it turns out that she prefers not to have a fence between her and the parking lot, because she doesn't want to lose her view of River Street. So it's nice, we're going to work out some landscaping with her. The Mahoney Creek Drainage Program is, the plans are being reviewed by the Army Corps of Engineers. For some of you who use Kirk Road a lot, you're familiar with the Kirk and Douglas Road project, that will make it safer for vehicles to turn off of, off of Kirk into Douglas. It was bid by KDOT last Friday, we haven't heard the results or what the schedule is, but as soon as we get that, Noel will get it first, we'll send something out to everyone. The Civil Tech is working on Phase 1 for the Main Street Project for 2016. I think we mentioned at the last committee meeting that the safe routes to schools are almost all done. They're reviewing, or they're working on developing the Statement of Qualifications for the Stormwater Utility, that was, that, that initial study was budgeted for this year, and that'll be later on in the, later in the fall, early fall, I think. The responses for the RFPs for redoing the city's website, REAN, are being reviewed by IAS, then the rest of the departments, then we'll come be making some recommendations. Finance Director Colby and Liz Perez, her assistant, myself, have begun interviewing various insurance agencies and brokerages regarding our non-health insurance. We pay about $350,000 a year in premiums for workman's comp and other liability coverages. We've been with the same agency for about 10 years, we've been very satisfied, but we feel that every once in a while, you need to go back out and interview people out in the field. There aren't all that, while there are many agencies and insurance brokerages, the fact is that there are not all that many different insurance companies who cover some of the areas that we need to be covered in, so it's just time to review that representation that we have now. And we recently were notified of the retirement of Sergeant Pete Tyo from the Police Department, and tonight, I believe, the Police and Fire Commission, tomorrow night, the Police and Fire Commission will be making a, or considering a promotion of one of our patrolmen to take his place, and that's all I have.
Any questions in the administrative this evening?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, committee reports. Community Development, Alderman Brown, please.
Just some meetings to announce. Your Honor, tomorrow night, J-Cow is at 7:30 August 5th, and the items that CDC has, we've got four or five of them. The first one is the variance for the Speedway, the proposed Speedway at 1495 East Wilson Street, that's on the northeast corner of Wilson and Kirk Road. Then we have the amending of the comp plan, land use map, and zoning for 525 Western Avenue. Another item is amending the zoning map for 1295 Paramount Parkway. Next item is amending the zoning map for 1355 South River Street, and the last item is the annexation of the properties along South Harrison Street, Walnut Street, and Main Street. And that's all I have for CDC. On that night, Plan Commission on Wednesday, August 6th, has been canceled, and then Historic Preservation is scheduled for 5:30 on Monday, August 11th. No items on their agenda yet, but it is a scheduled meeting. That's all I have.
Very good. Any questions? Public Utilities, Alderman Clark, please.
I have nothing to report, and looking at the calendar, nothing on the agendas regarding public utilities for the next several meetings. Of course, that's always subject to change, but as of right now, nothing to report. Thank you.
Okay. City Services, Alderman Wolf.
I have nothing on the J-Cow agendas for the next two meetings, but I would like to remind everybody that brush pickup for the east side starts on August 11th, next Monday, and the west side, the following Monday, the 18th. So, thank you.
Okay. City Services or Community, Government Services, Alderman Sparks?
Thank you. Tomorrow night, August 5th, we'll be discussing video gambling, and the next item is on August 12th, in the J-Cow, we'll be discussing the city telephone system upgrade and tentatively the mid-year financials. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody in the council of anything else you wish to bring up? Okay, going to item 13, the mayor's report. I am pleased tonight to announce, we had the recent meeting of the Kane County Council of Mayors here in this room a couple of weeks ago, in which all the cities joined us, and among the items that we did review and has been, I guess we can say officially approved, is our participation in federal funding for the Main Street Program, and as Bill indicated, I don't know if we're, Noel, do you think we're, Noel's left, I guess, hasn't he? We're tech, we're totally sure exactly when that's going to happen, whether it's going to be 15 or 16, but sometime in there, and then improvement will go from Van Ortrick back down to Water Street, and we are been made eligible for some, for federal funding to help pay for it, so I'm very pleased about that, because that, those, that can be a kind of a complicated situation if you don't have that backup of federal money, so I'm very pleased that we got the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning and the Kane County Council of Mayors, and we're, got the only Department of Transportation all buying into helping us facilitate that particular improvement. I will note that as part of the overall program that we've got going in Batavia, we've had with Gary Holm and Noel Basco, and I think we have a very good relationship with the Illinois Department of Transportation, and we have, I guess, a working, good working relationship, and from that, every now and then, because of my role in Chicago, I get a chance to, to talk to some of the IDOT guys, and I will tell you that they have been very complimentary toward our public work staff recently, and specifically in what we did with the infamous crosswalks at Batavia Avenue and Wilson Street. The IDOT thinks that we did a nice job, and, and the way we did that, and not pushing the idea of putting bricks in the street, and having the bricks come back out when trucks overloaded, ran over them and whatever, and really thought that our staff had risen to the occasion and found some alternative ways of doing that, which really made it a much more usable, friendly, user-friendly way than what had been originally discussed. In fact, the IDOT guys from Schaumburg told me they may even be bringing some other cities out to Batavia to look at our crosswalk program, because they thought we had done it with the different colors and the way it was put together, and the way it was staged as far as its construction, they thought it was nicely handled, so we got some nice compliments from them about that. The other thing I can report is, is that Pace Bus is looking at expanding the Dial-A-Bus, or the, I don't know, the Dial-A-Bus program, I guess you would say, for Batavia, and one of the things that they're now considering is, they've had some requests from Fermilab for the ability to have people take the train out from the western suburban, from downtown even, out to Geneva and get off the bus, or get off the train in Geneva, and get on a bus, and have a route from the Geneva Train Station to Fermilab. And so they're hoping to start that sometime after the first of the year, and the other interesting aspect to it is, is that they've talked to me about if we have some industries that have people that may be along the commuter line, that would like to commute out, they may have some extra seats on the bus that they could pick people up and take them to work, and as long as they're in the, kind of the route to Fermilab, they could drop some folks off and put them, pick them up at a given time and whatever, so we may be having some full-time commuter riding now from the train station to our industrial among the items that we did review and has been, I guess we can say officially approved, is our participation in federal funding for the Main Street Program. And as Bill indicated, I don't know if we're, Noel, do you think we're, Noel's left, I guess, hasn't he? We're totally sure exactly when that's going to happen, whether it's going to be '15 or '16, but sometime in there, and then improvement will go from Van Ortrick back down to Water Street. And we are been made eligible for some, for federal funding to help pay for it. So I'm very pleased about that, because that, those, that can be a kind of a complicated situation if you don't have that backup of federal money. So I'm very pleased that we got the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning and the Kane County Council of Mayors, and we've got the Illinois Department of Transportation all buying in to helping us facilitate that particular improvement. I will note that as part of the overall program that we've got going in Batavia, we've had with Gary Home and Noel Basquelin, I think we have a very good relationship with the Illinois Department of Transportation, and we have, I guess, a working, good working relationship. And from that, every now and then, because of my role in Chicago, I get a chance to talk to some of the IDOT guys, and I will tell you that they have been very complimentary toward our public work staff recently, and specifically in what we did with the infamous crosswalks at Batavia Avenue and Wilson Street. The IDOT thinks that we did a nice job in the way we did that, and not pushing the idea of putting bricks in the street and having the bricks come back out when trucks overloaded, ran over them and whatever, and really thought that our staff had risen to the occasion and found some alternative ways of doing that, which really made it a much more usable, friendly, user-friendly way than what had been originally discussed. In fact, the IDOT guys from Schaumburg told me they may even be bringing some other cities out to Batavia to look at our crosswalk program, because they thought we had done it with the different colors and the way it was put together and the way it was staged as far as its construction, they thought it was nicely handled.